Uh, the extent to which the removal of restrictions is definitely affecting the property. And this is, I guess, where it would it would affect strictly residential use, not the uh unless you put screen or extreme. Be required. For Irwin, well, being used as an Irwin. Any problem with that?
Why don't we put all that when he comes in to give you the flat?
Huh? Well, I would put it in a condition. Uh, proportionality of losses impacts individual property on in immediate vicinity relative to net public gain community at large. You got anything you wanna add to that? Do you all agree with that?
I'd like to make one point, uh, um, related to the type of business this is. It does have a public health impact. We have DUIs out the wazoo. Uh, it'll have an impact on our police, uh, officers. They'll have to be on the alert more for people with, uh, open bottles, that type of thing. And that comes at a cost, uh, a dollar cost. In some cases, lives get costed. So that other, this this aspect of balancing what is good for our economy versus needs to take into effect these other consequences that are unknown, uh, but they're very real. Kind of that ironic or oxymoron, moronic, you know, condition. But it's it's something that is occurring in our our communities. Would, I guess, a similar type of activity would be a, uh, a marijuana shop. Would we put a marijuana shop down down here in the C one area? Don't think so. But that's just throw that out as a a thing to consider in their personal deliberation on approval or not.
You're gonna get a DUI leaving that bar, not the liquor store.
Right. You're not that with a, I own property right over here. And there's all the time these little liquor companies. I assume they're younger kids. They do them out under a property. You know, or beer cans or, boy, even pop cans. I mean, they just, uh. So younger people are probably bringing.
Krista makes a good point about there is a bar two blocks away.
Or you can drink.
Yeah.
Where you can drink.
Well, that's probably.
And where we have had, um, public hearings about some of the bad things that has occurred there. Now, a liquor store is a a little better than that, it's a little tougher. Um, 'cause you're not supposed to drive a car with an open bottle. But boy, you sure see a lot of them on the street, don't you?
And to address the regulation side, like you said, um, there is, again, I can agree. Yeah, there's a lot more regulation that goes into a liquor store than that has. You cannot have an open container inside of a liquor, an open container inside of a liquor store. It is five thousand dollar fine right away. You do this twice. You know, they'll talk to you, they they'll talk to you within five thousand, I believe. You do it a third time, they take your license away, you know. And I believe that drinking is a personal choice that people have. And the people who do it responsibly, they're gonna do it responsibly whether it's down the street or they drive them out or they get it at the gas station or they get it at the PAF house. It's a personal choice that they're making. As adults and free Americans, they should be able to make those choices when they do it, as long as they're doing it within the legal boundary. And the provision is not even tested at our government. And they decided that Americans should be allowed to drink. It's already marijuana, in the case using your example, if you, it's still illegal at federal level. Alcohol is legal at the federal and the state government. That was good thinking.
Good point, Tim.
Any other comment?
The only comment I have is back to the welfare stating there. Like, does Keach I have the resources available to help with substance abuse issues that may come from having more access to alcohol?
I guess, look, nobody said nothing.
Yeah, I I guess if I could answer that question, we don't have any more resources than we do at the county or state level. Yeah, that's not, those resources aren't provided locally. They're provided at the, usually the state and county level, yeah.
So for the minutes, uh, number ninety one, the nearest cost to community, um, what what did you wanna add? Please say it.
Well, as is it drunk driving kills people. And there's a cost for that. And again, domestic disturbances. Police have to respond to domestic disturbances related to alcohol all the time. And again, have s- in some cases, pretty bad outcomes, uh.
Okay, any other? Can we return that? So. We have option to approve or deny this. Or recommend approval or deny, uh, denial to the, uh, the coun- council. And I guess. Or table the hearing again. So what, uh, can you interrupt?
I'm gonna sound like a jerk, but still, I think a liquor store belongs here, probably not, but can we tell him no? Not statistically, no, we can't. We can give him, uh, there's a bar right there, you know, so if you can go to a bar and drink all night.
Well, here, okay, let me just.
And I'm just saying for zoning reasons too, you have to rezone that, but it's it's not like he's bringing in the Hells Angels thing, I guess is what.
Uh, yeah, I do wanna te- tell you one thing. That old school taboos, when that went in, the, I'm not trying to air it very loudly, but the, this was overlooked, never came to the planning committee's room.
Yep.
And that thing was already in.
Yep.
And we had to go back after the fact to prove that. And there was conditions, you know, so that was not, I doubt, well, I don't know. I don't know if it would have been approved, I was going to. But it was, it never did. The city administrator and the old zoning administrator somehow missed it, but it was COVID. Hmm? COVID. I don't know. Anyway, so I mean, I I wouldn't necessarily base this decision on something we did on that, 'cause it wasn't us. What you thought tomorrow? I think I'd like to table it, so we can think about it a little bit more. Give us a chance to drop down there and look at.
Yeah, the other location, please.
And everybody can kind of get some feelings for it. Before we just try to make the decision.
I I'm not too much in favor of kicking the can down the road. We had.
I'm I'm not either, but this is the first time that I've known anything.
We had the three hours of testimony, the first time, and we've now spent another two hours on it. Uh, Mr. Ramos is is, uh, waiting for an answer. And, uh, to to me, the negativities outweigh the positives as a general, uh, aspect of this application. However, as the property owner, and we're only talking about the liquor store itself, uh, approving that conditional use. He has the right to do with it as he wants to do. And unless we can really come up with some aspect of the zoning and the regulations that govern it, uh, to deny it, I don't think we can.
Right, there you go.
And it's it's up. He's taking the risk. I have a feeling personally that he might operate it for a while. And given the the number of other very easy, accessible, uh, liquor stores around us, I buy my liquor of a global. Why? Because I go to Delux.
Right.
It's right across the street, easy to get to, especially on your way back from HD too. Uh, uh, the idea though is that the competition's gonna be stiff. I don't know other than, uh, Keechiteites, the few that that would, uh, buy a lot of liquor, probably isn't gonna happen. But he has the right to set up his his store and run it as he sees fit.
That is, that is true if it's approved, but this is, you can deny a condition of use.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, and I'm not saying we can't deny it. But given the the facts of the the zoning regulations and the the rules here, it fits kinda sorta.
I, uh, I tend to agree with what you have. I even think we have two. Did we have two liquor stores out there before? I don't know, and they didn't, didn't. And, uh, they didn't make, I I kinda agree with what you're saying. It doesn't seem like, uh, like, I hear people in like theirs, when we were having strategic strategic plan, we need to have a grocery store. We don't need a grocery store in Keechite. You got one right down to Leapers and you got, you know, it just stopped with the making. Those kind of things aren't gonna make it, but. So I tend to agree with what you're saying, but, uh, I have my doubts whether it would make it, but. But even if the building's there, somebody else will come in and try to do something.
Put something out, so.
Yes.
That's why I'm saying that people just said that if I'm under a square foot building.
That's a big building.
He's gonna be taxed on a million whatever plus at least, uh.
Yeah. And and he's allowing us to only letting use a portion of it for the liquor store, so he can't make it the whole thing a liquor store.
And if he fails, then he goes bankrupt, somebody else gets the building and puts in three aisles from source.
Yeah.
We don't have.
Well, hopefully I don't fail, but I.
No, I'm just saying.
Hopefully not. Hope I make it kinda true.
All of these guys get worried about if you're gonna make it or not, if you don't make it, you don't make it.
Right.
I mean, that that's that's life.
That's business.
But the building's there and something can be done with it.
Yeah, it's approved.
Um.
All right.
So, did you want to make a comment? We'll need to make a list of all the conditions. What is, uh?
There's dustin.
Right, dustin, but then we put the the size of that in the fit.
Yeah, but. Yeah.
What would a dustin? So how do you work that order of testing?
Uh, liquor stores shall be limited to the size of twenty five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Max.
Yeah.
Maximum twenty five hundred square feet.
Not not to exceed by some.
Not to exceed, not to exceed, yeah.
But I think you still still build the seventy five hundred square foot building.
Yes.
Not just a twenty, two thousand square foot, yeah.
Yes. You ran it all the way over dustin. So we have a cheat sheet.
I'm trying to.
What? Hang on, I'm.
Chris is doing.
But I'm trying to find this.
Then they also would screen between the commercial and the residential?
Yeah. Yep.
And was there anything else other than what rest of that already got there? Yeah, there's a look under there. Who? So he's got four here.
Should we have something in there, uh, or in the commenters brought up signage?
And no banners and.
Well, we have.
Just conform.
We we have signage regulations.
Yeah, I'd say just in conformance with the signs regulation.
Yeah, no. Um, I think what, a- and I'm not trying to be critical here, but, um, they're not being followed. And I I personally do not have a problem with what, just say cars. But they've had them temporary signs out there for years, or two years, 'cause I've voted on them. Those are temporary signs. So I'm just saying, if we have, if they have to, if they have to, uh, conform to our zoning regulations and signage, then we need to enforce that.
Help me out here so we can get this done. Uh, I move that the planning commission adopt the findings stated on the zoning administrators' report for case A R C U twenty twenty four as written. And forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body regarding the requested conditional use to allow a beer, wine, and liquor store in C one arts and business district, subject to the following conditions slash changes. Number one is?
The, so we've got the first four as written by the zoning.
As written by the zoning administrator.
Number five, uh, restriction of, uh, of the liquor store to twenty five hundred square foot.
Yes.
And number six, with the rest of it, I have to do both, too. The fact of the whole building has to be, uh, well, we we're not, we're not. That one would have a problem 'cause we can't approve, because it's, we don't have multi tenant. Basically, we're we're approving twenty five hundred square foot.
Okay, and we're restricting it to the twenty five hundred.
Right. Uh, and number six was, uh, screening would be required between, uh, commercial and the residential.
The residential. Number seven, performance with, uh, applicable, uh, zoning signage regulations.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion number four.
I still move.
No.
Or second, I mean, sorry.
Yeah, I have a motion by Mark, second, I ask for, uh, are you voting, Mark?
No.
No.
You voted no?
Yes.
And you're motioning.
Well, I know that's unusual, but I'm tired of screwing around, guys.
All righty, up with you?
I mean, I say yes for a building with multiple things, which we're not talking about, we're just talking about a liquor store.
Mm-hmm.
It's on approval, where they can get liquor, a liquor store there.
I mean, according to this, you can, so, yeah.
Okay, so yes, Krista?
Yes.
Yes? Yes? I'll say, uh. Okay, it's passed, uh.
Is it four to zero or five or?
Three to. Three to, three to one.
Three, three to one, you're not voting, okay.
No.
Then why'd you agree though?
Hmm? I would only vote if you tie. So if you don't, you vote, then you could.
Which one's wrong?
Okay, let me see here, I got some. Why did you, just try to, why didn't you make the motion? What's that, why didn't you make the motion?
Pardon?
Will you fill out the sheet for me?
Why, why didn't I do? I know. Still allow one, I don't rule, but.
You just gonna do me through?
I don't think I've ever done that.
Okay. All righty.
Oh.
And then the discussion, now we're on the, oh wait, I got something I need to read on that.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks a lot, that was real nice.
That was really rude.
Real nice.
What did he say?
Because you can't leave mom.
Oh, how nice.
That was super rude by a local business owner.
There goes your flowers, love. Okay, so, uh, the recommendation and a written summary of the public hearing considered by the governing body at their eight twenty two, twenty twenty four meeting to be held seven P M. in this room. And I would, I would recommend, we didn't approve anything, we recommended, so.
Hmm? Absolutely.
I would recommend it to vote the council meeting if you've got anything.
You don't have to worry about us not being there.
All righty, uh, unfinished business. So discussion and vote on, uh, changes to the zoning regulations, I'll put you back.
Yes. Um, we discussed it last time, uh, back in May. Uh, changes to the zoning regulations to allow multi tenant in C one, which I believe fits the spirit of C one and what it, uh, stands for and what it needs. Um, the second thing would be to allow, let's see here, uh, self-storage. We have, uh, garage self-storage coming in over, um, by Rock Road and, um, let's see, we want to be able to use hobby, metal fabrication, or woodworking. Currently, they're prohibited, but we want to allow that to take place within those type of storage units, uh, for tenants. We have local business owners out there who are ready to have tenants move in. And they are not allowed, some of those tenants aren't allowed to do what they want with those, uh, units. And they're, other cities have looked at them as extensions of a garage and allow those type types of features. I believe we are getting, uh, caught up with other cities in looking at those in the same way. Biggest thing is, uh, really need a vote on this tonight, so that way we can have a public hearing on it next month and then take it to city council at the end of September.
So we need a motion to go ahead and have a public hearing.
Yes. Can I elaborate just a little bit? So on the the storage portion of that, there's some guys who came in and they built, they look like huge storage units, okay? But they're, they call them condos or something like that.
Garage condos.
Garage condos.
Yeah.
So the concept is, is that you don't necessarily store things in them. They're kind of an extension of your home, okay? You purchase them, there's a, there's a deed to each unit. And you purchase that unit, yes, you could store your big RV in it, um, you could store classic cars in it, that's what a lot of guys use them for. But they also use them for, they'll put like woodworking shops in them. Or they'll put, you know, they'll they'll work on their classic cars in them or do hobbies in them.
They approved to use them, you just can't live in them.
Right, you can't live in them, right.
Right, I I know.
But the way they are, the use that they have now falls under a storage unit. So like the storealls, you can't do that type of thing out of a regular storage shed. You can't go rent one at the local storage place and set up a woodworking shop in it. You can't go rent one and do home auto repair in it. So it's prohibited in those. So because of this new concept, we need to change those regulations for those garage condo units to allow them to do it. Now, this particular one is covered by covenants as well. So they can't run businesses out of them, they can't have parties, they can't do all this other thing because it's it's restricted by their covenant. So just to help you, I didn't fully understand it when we started talking about it, so I just wanted to kind of bring a little more perspective on what those changes are.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are they bound to the timeframe that any resident would be on the noise levels?
Uh, that would be, well, it's in the, it's in the industrial park. So it would be governed by that zoning regulation. However, I know this one has covenants for that. So it's regi-
So lots of one that maybe is going in by me.
Is there another one going in over there? That's a good question, yeah.
Uh, I would probably.
Yes.
That's C three though, too.
Well, I would, however, no matter what it's zone, it would be regulated under our local ordinance for loud sound amplification.
Yeah, I would think that's why we don't put it industrial next to.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Uh, residential.
Yeah, well, she has, she lives right next to an industrial.
I didn't. I didn't, I didn't.
But you do now, mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
Can I?
Yeah, so that's a good, that's a good question, but really I feel that it would be regulated by our local town ordinance, yeah, on that. Any other questions for me?
Um motions, but we have a, well, or do you need a motion or just, yeah, have a public hearing.
Yes.
Have a public hearing next time, cool. Looked you, I looked you there, I did, I nothing was jumping out at me that needed to be added. Yeah, we were supposed to look and see if there was something else.
Right, right, the public hearing.
That was. Oh, did Mark do?
Well, um I've I was looking at this this afternoon, and and I I was a little confused until I kind of reread again, but it seemed like um the only two activities that that we're going to say is okay is um metal fabrication or woodworking. Is that, is that the intent, or, you know, could a, uh let's say I uh as an artist myself, if I wanted to get one of these leases in a this storage uh condo to do ceramics, would that be permissible?
Yeah.
So so there are, it's it's not specifically prohibited, it's okay, in general?
Ceramic work, yes.
Ceramic work, how about the print shop?
Yeah. If it's hobby, yes, notes more short, right, then I believe the the metal and woodworking are prohibited activities on those premises
And hobby related, yeah, yeah, okay.
for the majority of the part is uh the the chance of fire spreading, and.
Sure, sure. Did you take like, I I thought one for um uh related to quilting, suppose someone wants to put up a a quilting frame in one of those giant uh storage units and make a huge quill.
More power to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You you said, so the others are already, uh the stuff he's talking about are already allowed?
Yes, it's 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 not prohibited outright or anything in there, you're allowed to do hobbies.
It's just they restrict. Okay, so it's just restricted those because of
Player.
Bar, player.
The, I I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and have a public hearing next time. The only other thing, is anything else? Anybody else have anything else come for? Uh the only other thing I wanted, just briefly, is the, we used to uh have bylaws, and I asked Dustin about it, the best we've come up with is some from uh two thousand ten or eleven, yeah.
Two thousand eleven. Yeah, I believe those are still accurate, um I can check with the city attorney tomorrow, like like we discussed on the phone, but I believe those are the most uh recent.
Okay, and well, they need to agree with, I guess, um Kami when she was in, did you guys made changes to the uh for instance, like how many terms you can be in, so that would disagree with our.
So do they con, are you saying they conflict with the city ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll check that out.
So i- that, but they probably need to be updated and changed, and then we all need to have a copy of them.
Sure, yeah, we'll look at those.
Okay. That's it, entertain them.
I still voted.
Yeah.
Chris is second, Oscar is third.
That means we can get out of here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Word of the jury.
Light my alon.
Thank you, opportunity.
Yes.
Oh.
Imagine something that this is, you know, a grocery store would go here to do business up down there, that's what we were kinda saying. Yeah, they're different.
I go ahead, I go ahead.
Oh, by the way, did you hear his comment? He lifted us through all the phones, he can't unball.
So how was your first notch?
Well, I had mouth surgery yesterday, and tried to mail on you guys, and they told me I couldn't, so.
So right there.
Now we.